He's ready.
Sure.
He's ready? All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's agenda for Wednesday, September 27, 2017, it is 6:30 PM. And we're at room 320 at the Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'll call the meeting to order, make a roll call. To my far-right town engineer, Charlie Rowley, member Wilma Engerman, our clerk, Jim Akabachi, my far-left alternate member Jake Morrison, regular member Carl Baptiste, myself, the Chair, Nazir Al-Khlasik. We have a regular member, Jen Kendrick. She can't be present tonight. Is Attorney Bello here?
Yes.
Okay. Do you mind calling him, Scotty? Why, man?
Hello.
How are you? Got four board, four members.
It's a prop.
I know. So that's why I called you first, see what you want to do. Jen, she sent the email, supposedly she can't make it. And I know you don't like to wait. We don't want to do what we did before.
I have a lot of people here, consultants here from Boston.
I mean...
Let me talk with them. Do you have a copy of your zoning bylaw book here?
I have a...
Yeah. Are you doing anything for me now? You are? What are you doing now?
Congratulations.
Just like drills. Yeah. You say weeks on.
While he's reviewing that, I think we could approve the meeting minutes from September 13th. Can't we?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I didn't get a chance to read.
I did.
Yeah?
I did review them, but they're fine.
Okay. Because I didn't get a chance. This is...
You had a chance to see the minutes from last week.
On the signs?
Jake, you got a chance to see the last minutes from last week? They emailed to us.
Yes.
They look good to me. They look good.
Jim, are we allowed to accept them? From Makepeace?
I don't know. I haven't really read it.
Tickets to their cranberry thing next weekend?
Sorry about that.
We can ask during...
We're just gonna do some preliminary business. We get the minutes for September 13, 2017.
I've read them. I've talked with a couple of the other members. They've read them. They look fine as presented. They move that we accept as presented.
Do I have a second to accept them?
Second.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I want to pull petition 34-17. We're just gonna discuss with Attorney Bello. Where'd he go? Again? Right? Okay. I'm sorry, then. Gee, I'm so... I'm not gonna like disoriented for a while.
Well...
We're not here, right?
We're here.
Okay. All right. Let me see this. Where were we? Okay. We wanna... We're just gonna pull this out of the agenda and discuss it quick. The Attorney Bello has mentioned something to me, and we have to agree on this before we open the hearing. If you guys look at the bylaws and the signs, Article 11. If everybody can open his book. Look at 11, Wilma. And if you guys look at page 83 on variance/special permit.
Mine's 81.
81? Okay. Well, you have the old one. I have the new one.
It's basically...
What are we looking at?
81.
Look at 83 or 81, signs. Variance/special permit for signs. You have it? You have 81. Right here. Wilma, do you have it?
Yes, I have it.
1125A.
It's, yeah, section 1125A. And if you guys read what it says, "In those instances where the strict application of this article will be impractical, impossible, or create undue hardship, a majority, majority vote of the zoning board of appeal may permit a variance from this article." So it doesn't need four out of five for a... It needs a majority. So if you guys are four, three members can grant the permit. Do you have a comment, Charlie?
I agree.
You agree with this? Carl, do you agree with that?
I do.
Jimmy? The reader?
Yeah.
Wilma, do you agree with it?
Is it A specifically that says that? Or is it...
Yeah, A. Yes.
A majority rule?
And then again, that only goes for signs, not for building or use.
I see it now. I see it now.
So for other applicants, it does not go for variance, for abuse, or encroachment, or setback, or any of those. Are we all in agreement with that?
From this article. Okay.
Okay. Okay, I'll agree.
Yeah. All right. So we'll just stay a bit... We'll stick with the agenda. All right. Thank you.
We're not gonna open it now. We just wanted to see if they were staying or going.
Great. All right. We're gonna go...
Stay, go, stay.
Petition 6-15, road construction bond release, CEC Solar, 127R Marion Road. Anybody here from them? Or just a bond release? They don't have to be here. Is Ken here?
Ken's not here.
Ken's in a...
We're gonna hold off on that until we...
Yeah. Because I'm sorry, I've been disoriented for not being here for a while. All right. So we'll skip to the public hearings. We'll table...
I'm disoriented just from getting old.
All right. So we'll table 6-15 until Ken gets here. We go public hearing, 29-17, 31 Priscilla Avenue, Dorothy Schnatter. Wanna come forward, please?
I guess I knew when I gotta read it.
I wouldn't open it at this point.
All right. Due to a conflict with JC Engineering, myself, so I guess he's got a fourth board member. I guess you have... You're here for a variance?
Special permit.
Special permit for a... Okay.
Setbacks, so...
So he needs four out of five. He has the right to request a...
You want to continue?
So you want to continue?
There.
He does.
Any scheduling conflicts with at least this board, these board members in the next hearing?
Supposedly, you know...
And with me.
They're all volunteers, so supposedly they showing up next time, all of them. Are you guys gonna be here on October 11?
I'll be here.
Carl? Carl?
Yeah, I'm checking.
Wilma, you gonna be here October 11? Jimmy, you are?
I'm on set.
All right. So you want to continue?
I request a continuance in the hopes of a full five-member board.
All right. Okay. Very well.
The secretary sent us a form that they want applicants to fill out, just to cross the Ts and dot the Is, just in case. I don't have that form at my fingertips.
I can check with them tomorrow.
Check with them tomorrow if there's a form that you need to fill out. She's got a new piece of paper that I saw and I can't grab right yet.
Well, if he's asking for the continuance...
He has to apply.
So we're not losing time, so we're not on a deadline, you know? So that keeps that 60 days from scratch again.
That's correct.
We're supposed to open within 60 days, so if he asks for continuance, it's 60 again from today. All right?
Abstain.
Okay. Very well. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move to grant the extension.
All right. Grant the extension until October 11 for petition 29-17 for 31 Priscilla Ave. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain.
It's October 11, you said?
Yes.
And it's a 5-0-0?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Petition 32-17, Dean Gilhui, Gilhui, 18 Pine Lake Drive. Just have a seat, sir. Just give us a minute.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September 27, 2017, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, for consideration of petition number 32-17 for a special permit or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 13, Section 1335 of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Dean Gilhui, 23 Clinton Drive, Washingtonville, New York, 10992, seeking to construct a 10-foot-by-13-foot covered porch located at 18 Pine Lake Drive, Wareham, Mass. That's on a census map, 129B5, Lot 56, in the R130 zoning district.
All right. Very well. Just your name and address for the record.
Dean Gilhui, 23 Clinton Drive, Washingtonville, New York.
All right. You want to tell us what you're trying to do?
I'm trying to put out a screen-in porch in the back of my cottage.
Okay.
Is there an existing porch?
No.
Okay.
All right. Is that the blue house?
The blue house, yeah.
Yeah. So that's the blue one we looked at?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Fairly new, and a couple of fairly old ones to the side of your cottage. Yours is more modern, more new construction?
No, sir. It was built in '47, I believe.
Okay. Then maybe we didn't see the right house. Has there been a lot of work, any work done since '47?
Next to nothing.
Next to nothing? Okay.
But it's the blue house with the casement windows all open in the front. You have a...
Oh, Pine Lake Drive. I'm sorry.
That's the one, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I did see it. I'm thinking of Priscilla.
Yeah, that's the one.
Still in Priscilla in my head.
Do you have any...
Do you have any plans, any... We do. You want to see that? You want to share this with Wilma?
All right.
Inspector's opinion. Carl, Jake, you want to see the building inspector's decision?
Okay. Here's the deal. Being in the R130 zone, the setbacks, as we always encounter with these, is always an issue, and we hope to change the bylaw very soon for these things. Setbacks for the sides and the back is 30 feet, the front 100 feet. Apparently, gentlemen, seeking relief from the setbacks to 12 feet in one side and the other side...
It's 22.
He's asking for... 22 feet. Prior to the zoning bylaw changes, that would be perfectly legal. We wouldn't have to be here. But apparently, when they did the plan, the planning board changed the bylaws on R130. They didn't take into consideration these lots, and that's why Section 1335 comes in action here. It is up to the board to decide if we feel it's less detriment to the neighbors and make less impact, so we treat it as a special permit. If not, it becomes a variance. So I want to pass to board members some questions first, then we go back to the public. Wilma, what do you have to say?
Well, one question is, the porch is going out onto the leaching bed. Around the chamber. Cutting right across the corner. I mean, it's still... There is a... Supposed to be so many feet from the leaching bed. And...
If I may, Wilma, Charlie, what's the setback of any structure of the leaching field?
Leaching field, if there's a cellar, it's 20 feet. If it's a crawl space or a slab on grade, it's 10. So I'm not sure what this has for foundation, but typically, it's 10.
Okay. Do you have a full foundation there? Full basement?
Crawl space. No, sir.
It's a crawl space?
Crawl space.
All right. Charlie, is there setbacks from the porch for a leaching field?
If it has, if it has a crawl space foundation or a slab foundation, it would be 10. If this is just a porch that's supported above grade, I'm not sure that that would apply, but in any event, I don't think you want the structure itself crossing the bed, which it appears to do in this particular case.
Is it a porch or deck?
Ultimately, it will be up to the Board of Health.
What... Exactly.
Is it on the... Santer?
Yeah, but it's covered porch. It can be above a leaching field.
Can I comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
The porch is gonna be up on sonar tubes?
Correct.
And tubes are gonna be set back?
Right. However, you cannot encroach above the leaching field, the perimeter of the leaching field. I'm pretty sure the Board of Health will not allow it. You might need a variance from them, but let me...
I did look, show the Board of Health, and they said it wouldn't be a problem.
You went so... Showed them?
Yes.
All right.
That was my concern also.
My recommendation, when it's very critical, this dimensions like this, we would like to see, especially when it's a variance/special permit, we'd like to see an engineer plan with the layout perfectly. Like, for instance, you're saying it's 12 feet to the side. Now you go build the deck, and you are 10 feet. Then we have an issue in the future, or somebody come back, say, well, it's supposed to be 12 feet, because scaling it at home, it doesn't really work. So we... I recommend, I don't know what the board would recommend, we'll pull a vote on this to get a surveyor to do this. You probably can get a local surveyor to make you in a plan. We'll propose...
12 feet, the closest point is 12 feet to the fence, the far corner.
Right. But that's not, that's not engineering plan, so we don't know if it's exactly 12 feet. In order... Let me put it another way. When we... If we grant a special permit, special permit or a variance, we have to refer to a plan, which is a legal plan. This isn't legal plan, it has to be stamped by engineer, and we have to refer a date to it. Not your house, not your house, the proposed project. So you proposed deck. You understand? I know you have a surveying here plan.
Yeah.
So we need someone like this. He's gonna draft the deck here. So you gotta bring it to him, and draft the deck, and show us the dimensions here. And maybe when he drafts, you're not above your leaching field. Do you understand what I'm saying? So you did it with yourself, with the scale.
Yeah, that's what they told me.
I understand, but we cannot refer, referring to such a plan to build the deck, to grant you, especially if it's a variance, if we grant it, has to be Dunbar surveyor. Et cetera, et cetera. Yeah.
It's a surveyor, it might be him.
Right.
So...
Right. So you might be in better shape if you survey, like Carl was saying. If you notice to your holding tank, you get 10 feet six, and you're saying your porch is 10 feet out, and you're showing more than 10 six. You might be in way better shape. You'll be closer, and it looks better for the board. Do you understand what I'm saying? You want to come? I show you? Sir, you want to come? I show you quick?
Yeah.
All right. Check this out. This is 10 foot six, right? And you're saying 10 feet. So your deck is to here. You know what I'm saying? So it looks much better.
Okay.
So...
You see what he's saying?
So we're trying to help you out as much as we can. So if you take it to an engineer, you come back, it's gonna look like this. It would look much better and acceptable to the board. So what you have to do, whoever...
Nazir?
Yes? Charlie?
Nazir, would you ask the applicant if he can tell us what the dimensions on the existing house is? What are the...
What size foundation in the house?
25 square?
25 by 25?
Yes.
All right. You could sit back.
We have a scale drawing here, Charlie, that shows the... And the house and...
The porch he has drawn is far greater than 10 feet in depth.
That's right.
Out of scale.
If you scale it out from the existing building, you won't touch the leaching field.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay. Let me finish asking Jim. Do you have a question?
I think, I think I know where it's... I'm good.
Questions?
Yep.
I have one.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or against this project? Hearing none. So, like I said, my recommendation to get a stamped surveyor plan proposed. What do you think, Jim?
I think that we encourage the applicant to come back with a drawn plan that we can vote on.
Okay. So can you... You think you can get set a plan by the 11?
See, it's difficult for me, because I live in New York. It's hard for me to come up, keep coming up back and forth for meetings. I was told I could just draw in the porch, an approximation of the porch. I mean, if it shows...
Who told you that?
It's 10 feet six.
Who told you that?
Inspector. I mean, it shows 10 feet six to the...
Yeah, yeah. I got you.
The only people that can tell you this is the board members. No one else can make that decision but a board member.
And I talked to the Board of Health, and they said there's no minimum, there's no problem approaching the leaching field, as long as the sonar tubes are not into the leaching field.
Correct. This is sound, they have to deal with it, not our board, but our board is very strict with things like this, because dimensional, when we have dimension issues, they'll come back and haunt us after, so... And believe me, if you make this plan, it's gonna help you. All what you have to do, call this... Who was the engineer on that plan? The big plan, Jim?
Judge Corden?
No.
Oh, sorry.
JC Engineering. One of them is here, out here. His name, Brad. So you could talk to him, have him do it for you, and you just come up one more trip. Sorry about that. So would you like to come back on the 11? Is that enough time for you, or you want to go to 25?
Hold on.
Okay. 11th's good? You can't... Excuse me?
Yes, the 11th.
Okay. Very well. So Jimmy?
Who's continuing? We asking him back, or is he asking to come back?
We ask him to...
I know it's semantics, but...
Why, he's... We ask him to come back.
We're inviting him to come back. Okay. We're...
Hmm? With the engineer plan? Go ahead, Jim, make a motion.
I move that we continue this hearing until October 11.
Okay. For the applicant to come up with a civil engineer plan, showing the proposed deck. Okay? Thank you.
We really didn't vote. Do we want to vote on that motion?
Do you have a second for Jim?
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. All right. So which one was that?
Is that... Can I have all of... Anything to do with that back for the folder? Unless you guys want to take it home for bedtime reading?
31. 3.
Huh? No. It's mine.
Yeah? Yeah, Pine Lake Drive. This is... Okay. I need the folder, not the plan. Okay. I got your paper cut right here. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. Petition 33-17, Angelo and Melody Salvadori, Karof Michael Saravia, 15 South Boulevard. Wanna come forward, please? Take a seat. Let us read the note.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on September 27, 2017, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571, for consideration of petition number 33-17 for a special permit or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Section 622, and Article 13, Section 1335 of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Angelo and Melody Salvadori, Karof Michael Saravia, 19 Pleasant Avenue, Onset, Mass., 02558, seeking to construct a second-floor addition to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling located at 15 South Boulevard, Onset, Mass., on a census map 1, Lot 66, in the Onset Village 2 zoning district.
All right. Name and address for the record, and tell us what you're trying to do.
15 South Boulevard.
Name, and your name.
My name is Amy Fantoni. I am the daughter of Angelo and Melody Salvadori.
Okay, sir.
And Michael Saravia.
Michael Saravia. Okay. Want to tell us what you're trying to do?
We are petitioning to add a second level to the existing portion of the house, of the existing house, remaining on the same purpose of footprint.
Okay. Do you have architectural plans in the folder? Do you have architectural plans in the, in the folder?
They were, they're here.
Where?
I submitted them.
Well, hang on, hang on.
Okay.
Are they big plans or are they little like this?
They're little, I asked if they wanted, the big ones they...
Okay. Oh, I think it's all just one set. I think it's all just one set, it's not multiple.
Why don't you guys look at, start looking at it while I write this, please.
We have that one set.
You have any more sets, any plans, or just one set?
I, I submitted all the sets. I think it was what, seven sets or eight sets?
With the architecture plan, you submitted seven?
Yeah, not, just the small ones, not the large set.
Okay.
I can get you a large set if you need.
Let me look in the, let me look in the...
That's a one-story house?
A proportion of the house is one-story, the remaining section is currently two-story.
Is it a gray house?
Yep.
So Jimmy, that's the right one. South Boulevard, then, before the post office, you take a right, right?
If you want, I have a picture of it.
Yeah, please, so we know, make sure we look that right. Oh, okay. That's not what we look at. We didn't go to South Boulevard. It's the GPS.
South Boulevard, the street that goes in by the post office.
That's not, that's Pleasant.
That's the side we're looking at, it's Pleasant, right?
Yeah, you're standing on Pleasant.
Not Pleasant.
We're on Pleasant, right here.
That's a street view from Pleasant.
It's the house behind the white big building, the big inn, whatever the...
The hotel, yeah. Whatever.
Yeah.
That's the hotel there. This is South Boulevard, yeah, this is Pleasant.
So it's the second to last house on Pleasant Ave, when you go around the corner.
So the...
You're in the middle? Is that right across from you?
Yeah, it's right across from me.
So the, the one-story, you wanna make it two stories? Yeah, what's that?
It's not blocking out here, that's it.
There's a letter from David.
Yeah. It's in, it's in, it's over there.
Okay, wait, just give me a minute. All right, so it is existing non-conforming lot, so... So it requires special permit, a special permit as the applicant asking. However, if the board feel is very detrimental or has a big impact, it will become a variance. So we have to vote, make sure first it's a special permit or a variance. We're gonna ask the board a few questions, then we get back to you. Wilma, what do you have to say?
They just wanna put a second floor.
On half of the building.
On what? On half the building? I don't understand.
They wanna put a second story on that. This already has a second story.
They're only seven and a half, 7.8 feet from the lot line.
So this is what it'll look like.
Who drafted the architecture plan, an architect or?
An engineer.
An engineer?
It says here by...
All right, we're, we're gonna need John with the stamp on it. The, the guy who did it, not the site, the, the plan, the architect.
It should be on the plan that was submitted.
It says, "Architectural drawings by John Spink PE comprised of five pages." We don't have them, so we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to make these people come back so that we can see those plans.
Yeah, but if they supply them, they, they are, let me see, do they show there? On the ones she's looking.
Is it done with that?
You gave them seven sets?
I have a full set in my truck, if you wanna...
Can you grab it?
You can call us back up.
No, no, go grab it, I'll wait for you.
I'm gonna have somebody bring it right now.
Okay.
This is the John Spink drawing, but...
It's a date, 17...
So do you wanna...
No, he's bringing them up. All right, so we continue in questions. You have anything to say?
I, I don't know if I have questions or comments.
Comments, questions.
We're not increasing the footprint, so therefore not, we're not changing anything that has to do with the setback requirement. So the only change is on height.
Well, he...
It conforms to, he, he, his new plan will conform to height requirements.
Wait, you, we are...
So the question I'm struggling with, are we inten, it's, it says here, "The intensification of the structure will require a special permit." If the structure, if the board finds the additional increases, the non-conforming nature, then we're going into variance land.
Right, that's where Section 1335 comes in.
Yep, yep.
So we, it's the board discretion to decide if it's a variance or a special permit. So...
I think we're increasing the non-conformity because we're not changing the setback one inch, existing non-conforming.
Right, but when you go at second floor, you are...
We're, we're intensifying it, that's the word he's got, intensification. So that's what I'm saying, we're, I'm, I'm trying to balance, are we in special permits territory or are we in variance territory?
I think it's a special permit, we'll have to pull a vote on it.
Okay. Well, I'd go along with the special.
Okay, Jake, what do you think?
I'd go along with the special permit as well.
Carl. All right, anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor or against? Yes, ma'am, wanna come forward? Yeah, just your name for the record. And your address?
I live in Foster, 50...
You could say...
...Gurancy Street.
Yeah.
I do have some things, if I can bring them up.
Sure. And you're in Abara?
I'm directly across from that driveway, directly.
Okay.
My sister and I have owned this house for almost 50 years. We, we live on the corner of Pleasant and Sixth.
Okay.
The address is, was 23 Pleasant, but then it was changed by Town Hall to 16th, so it's directly across, and there's a picture there that shows it. Our house faces the back of the Salvador house, which is on 15 South Boulevard. The house is already non-conforming dwelling, which is why I'm here. I'd like to just give a short history of the evolution of this house, because we've been there since it was a garage. When we first purchased the house, 15 South Boulevard was a converted garage, which originally was part of that hotel, that white hotel. Mr. Greg lived there, he had lost both his legs, so he needed a one-story place. George Nadi moved in to take care of him, and after a time, a small addition was added to accommodate Mr. Nadi's living space. This small addition faced the Boulevard. Nobody objected to that. When Mr. Greg died, he left the house to Mr. Nadi. Mr. Nadi married and lived there with his wife for many years, and they also put yet another small addition on. Nobody objected. The Nadi's then sold the house to Larry and Linda Blacker. They put the large addition onto the house, connecting it to the small house. The larger addition has a foundation, the small house has none, only crawl space. Again, there was no objection. So little by little, over the years, our ocean view has narrowed. Now the Salvadors wanna put a second floor addition to the front of the house. The notice sent from your board was the first we heard about these plans. It's troubling to us, as we feel we should have been informed of this intention this summer. There was ample opportunity for them to speak with us about this, nobody did. Years ago, there was a gentleman on Sixth who wanted to put a house up on the entire, on his extra lot, and during that time, he was applying for a permit. He went to every person in the neighborhood and told us of his intentions. Each of us agreed to sign his petition. He never did get the permit, but he certainly proceeded to treat his neighbors with respect. We object to the zoning board allowing this for these reasons. The laws of the common wealth of Massachusetts regarding this type of addition, which has been given to you, along with the pictures I gave to you, show the perspective on the house in question and how our ocean view would be impacted yet again. The subject property located in the Onset Village O V two district, which is intended to promote moderate density residential development and compatible business spaces outside the center of Onset Village. The subject property currently exceeds the zoning on a minimum of four of seven required dimensional levels. Less than 10,000 square foot lot area, theirs is 3,918. Less than 50 feet of frontage, 11.83 square feet. At 1,602 square feet, the current structure is more than two times the allowable limit of 20% for lot coverage. Current building setback is less than 10 feet from South Boulevard, according to the photo. The proposed addition contemplated under petition 3317 would violate both elements of Massachusetts general law enumerated above in the letter that I gave you, further intensifying an existing non-conforming that's already well beyond the zoning limits set in this area. In addition, the proposed structure would obstruct our ocean views yet again, not only at street level, but also from our second floor porch and windows. This addition would be significantly detrimental to the value of our property, and additionally, it would negatively impact our enjoyment of the home our family has treasured for nearly 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, do you know what lot is your house?
Yes, it's right, directly across.
Was it 64, they're 66?
It's a double lot. It goes to West Central.
The water's over here, so she's gonna be, yeah, you're right.
You're 64 and 63?
Yes, it goes from West Central to, to Pleasant along Sixth.
You're on the corner?
That whole...
You wanna show me?
Directly across, yes.
24 and 64.
Directly across from the driveway.
You wanna show me here? Do you mind? So this is the lot, which one are you, and what? Oh, you, you, okay. Okay.
44 and 64.
Okay.
So she's this, this, this is you?
Right, so we're directly...
All right. All right. Anyone else would like to speak?
For or against?
First of all, Mr. and Mrs. Sweeney, I, with all due respect, I...
Just speak to us, you have to direct to us, that, that's how it does.
In response to her concern, their concerns, I will, I will speak to them, and I honestly did not know that they were not aware of this change. Beyond that, I'm not sure what substantial impact may be made due to the fact that the hotel itself, the, the section of the hotel is already blocking the view.
I know what you're saying, but there's, there's always, like, each particular lot, if you make an impact on the neighbor, whatever, if the hotel is there, it's there. If you're increasing your building and you make an impact, it doesn't mean that we say no, but it becomes, it becomes detriment to the neighborhood, then we have to treat it as a variance. If we treat it as a variance and we grant it to you, if it appealed and caught, you will lose very quick. If, if we treat it as a special permit, but we have to feel that it's not imposing or detriment to the neighborhood or invasive to the neighbors, then it's a special permit. Even if it goes to court, 99% of the time, you'll win, if it goes that far. So it is up to the board, not me personally, so you have to get, we will vote first to see if the board feels it's a special permit or a variance. If, for instance, the neighbors were in here complaining, so apparently it's not invasive or detriment to the neighbors, so most likely the board will feel it's a special permit. Now that the board heard the neighbor's testimony, so it's up to the board to decide first if it's a special permit or variance. That being said, if you wanna add anything else before we close the public hearing to vote on it, so you could say, did you get the plans that came up?
I texted them to bring them, but I'm at this point, do you still wanna have them bring them?
I mean, yeah, we're still going, we're still going, we're gonna vote, see if it's a, so there's two votes we're gonna go through. All right, do you wanna say anything else before we close the public hearing?
What other options would we have to, if we were to continue to a later date?
We can continue, you can continue, you could modify your plan, you could chit chat with the neighbors, we, we'll be more than happy to give you that, we'd like to solve these issues before it comes before us. So why don't we continue till October 11? Is that good for you? All right, Jimmy. So moved. All right, so we have a motion to continue petition 33-17 for Angelo and Melody Salvadore till October 11. Do I have a second? Second by Carl, all in favor to continue, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. So, so we see on October 11, just bring full set of plans stamped from the...
Set one.
One big set and the other one 11 by 17.
Seven.
Not, not, not eight by 11, 11 by 17, and one big one, two by three.
So we can share.
Talk to your neighbors outside, sort it out, maybe you fix your plans. But like I said, it's hard to grant a variance. It's not impossible, it's hard to grant, so the less people has a problem with it, the better it is. All right, thank you, have a good night. All right.
Can I have them, anything that you have back?
34-17, Roberts, yes, go ahead.
We're going two of us to continue, which I know we're not on till the end, but I'm wondering...
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
I'd just prefer to have the, the full board.
All right, very well, so petition 13-17, Jay Donagan, 2419 and 2427 Cranberry Highway, and 4th S. Toby Road. And applicant, name and address?
Matt Smith with Fuller Engineering, 352 Turnpike Road in South Carolina, Massachusetts. We'd appreciate to continue the meeting on the 11th, just to have a full board at that time.
Jim?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye to continue. October 11? Aye, oppose, abstain. Sorry for, sorry, sorry about that.
Thank you for coming up.
All right.
Do I have everything back from?
No, no, no.
She gave us that, so we're gonna put that in the folder.
Yeah, that's very...
Yeah, yeah, I'll put it in the folder.
Hold on, we mixing them up.
You're leaving? You're not gonna stick around for Robinsons?
That's it, that's it. That goes in, everything goes in. We done?
What do you want us to do?
So we don't get things confused?
No, we don't want things confused, it's kinda, we do much. All right, well, it's red, let's hear, here, one more.
Get that one in there.
We have a...
One second, just...
Look at one plan, we read them.
All right, let's jump to 34-17, Robertson, Robinson Realty Corp., Karof, Leonard Bello, 2680 Cranberry Highway.
Good evening once again.
Good evening.
My name's Leonard Bello. I'm representing the petitioner. I have with me Scott Howard Robinson. You all should have a... You all should have a package typical as to what I present.
All right.
We need to read this one in, Lenny.
Let's read it in first and we go forward. Ma'am, you want to take it outside if you don't mind? Thank you. Go ahead. Jimmy.
The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on September 27, 2017, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. For consideration of Petition Number 34-17 for a special permit or variance from the requirements of Article 11, Section 1126, Article 11, Section 1115, and Article 11, Section 1116 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Robinsons Realty Corp., care of Leonard Bello, 2680 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. 02571, seeking to construct a new double-sided digital billboard located at 2680 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. That's on Assessor's Map, 110 Lot 1069 in the CG zoning district, period.
Okay, just for the record, I have conflict with Attorney Bello. I will participate in the case, however, I cannot vote for it. And as we discussed prior, based on the bylaw for the signs, Article 11, I believe, and section, is it 11?
1125.
Section 1125, it's Article 11. All what the applicant needs, a majority of a vote, a majority of vote on that matter. All right, counsel, cheers.
Okay. In my, the package that I've presented to you, if you go to the second page, paragraph 8.
I already gave her one.
It gives you a... The letter I refer to as the petitioner's intent explains what the project is and gives you information that you would need to make a decision. The parcel of property that we're talking about is located off of Cranberry Highway and runs from Cranberry Highway all the way to Route 25, or sometimes referred to as Route 495. Several small parcels owned by the Robertson family in 2016 were joined together into a 22.3-acre parcel, now referred to as a new lot 1069 on map 110. A portion of the property that actually abuts Cranberry Highway houses Robertson's G M C and Robertson's Auto Salvage. I'm sure anyone in town is familiar with that piece of property. The vast majority of the land has been owned by the Robertson family since the early 1970s. Near where this parcel abuts Route 25, for a number of years, there was a tall-standing sign advertising Robertson's Auto Salvage and letting people know that they were to take the next exit in order to get to that location. A photo of that sign is included in Exhibit E. Weather eventually took its toll on the sign, and until all that remained was a steel frame. The petitioner is before you tonight seeking a variance/special permit to erect a double-sided digital billboard, which will be easily visible to commuters traveling to or from the Cape on Route 25. The Robertsons have with them here tonight their consultants, the Cohen Brothers, who are fairly excited about the marketing opportunities that such a sign could bring in light of the lack of advertising on either side of Route 25 at the present time. While a sign of this nature is not something that can be constructed and maintained as a matter of right, Section 1125 of the zoning bylaw permits members of the zoning board, by way of majority vote, upon an application in a public hearing to grant the variance from the sign restrictions. As most of you are aware, we have granted such a variance/special permit on a prior occasion, allowing for the conversion and enlargement of an existing static billboard at the soft-touch car wash to modernize into a digital billboard. This conversion, while initially met with some opposition, has proved to be nothing but a positive for the town of Wareham. At the time of that hearing, representatives of both the fire department, along with the chief of police, spoke in favor of the conversion, being familiar with all of the studies that had been conducted, both at the state and federal government level regarding various safety concerns. Like in the previous case, the state and town would have free access in the event of public service or emergencies, such as Amber Alerts, and the town of Wareham, like in the previous case, will receive up to five hours per month of free access to display messages of its choosing to promote the town or events taking place in the town. In addition, there to a linkage fee similar to the one offered by Clear Channel when it converted its static sign to digital, will be offered to the town. According to the building, the Director of Inspection Services, the applicant needs relief from the following sections of the zoning bylaw, all of which can be granted by this board under Article 11, Section 1125 of the zoning bylaw. Article 11, Section 1126 requires a heightened area variance. Article 11, Section 1115 is a variance for prohibition of signs that flash or have reflective elements. Article 11, Section 116 is a variance from the prohibition of signs that flash, rotate, or have motorized moving parts. Those are the variances that the building inspector says are necessary in order to erect this. You have in your package, in Section E, photographs of what the sign would look like, where it would be located on the highway. What there is there now is a cell tower that's been erected very close to where this would be going. That cell tower is 190 feet, 95 feet in height. The billboard that's being requested is going to be, the faces are going to be 14 by 48 feet, and it will be less than 125 feet in height, but needs to be tall enough to get over the trees in order to be visible from both sides. You may know, in order for a digital billboard to be put up along a state highway, it must get approval from the state. Robert Cohen is here. Robert is a past deputy commissioner for the State Highway Department in charge of regulating and authorizing the erection of digital signs on state highways. If you'd like to hear from him, he certainly is available, but he will tell you that this particular location, because of the size of the lot, location of some commercial businesses within a certain footage of where this tower or sign is to go, that this will meet all of the state requirements, something unlikely that most lots would not meet, so...
Lenny, is the green, that's the proposed sign?
The dot is where it's going, the green dot is where it's going, yes.
And, and how far is it from the state highway layout?
Rob, can you...
There's some pictures that help to go further into the exhibits.
I agree that it looks like 40 feet.
Your name, just your name for the record.
Name's Robert Cohen. I'm, as Sonny was saying, I served as the deputy commissioner of Mass Highway for many years, and now in private practice, and acting as a consultant with my partner, Michael Cohen. So it's in this middle, it's approximately between 40 and 50 feet away from the highway.
Okay. Now, if I may, Lenny, the previous one we granted back on Clear Channel on Route 28, I would assume the same, 25 is a state highway, right? It's not a federal highway. So it's pretty much the same rules applies?
I don't believe the same rules apply.
I mean, same laws?
So...
As a state concerned?
So the 25 is a state highway, so we'd have to go before the state highway...
Right.
...after advertising division, so that's not...
Route 28 is a state highway, and Route 25 is...
That's correct.
495 is, is not state.
Right.
Right.
This is not on 495.
This is not on 495.
Right, so the sign you have to sort out with the state.
Right.
Correct. All right, so we're just gonna start, we'll ask Charlie a few questions, maybe, and then we go to the board and the public. Charlie?
Sir.
Did you have a chance to look at it?
I haven't, I haven't seen any of this documentation.
No?
No.
Do you want to hand that over to Charlie?
I mean, other than structure-wise, I mean, you're not gonna be concerned with structure-wise, right?
No, the, the only thing that occurred to me, and it's without ever seeing what he's got here, is why, if the sign is greater than 100 feet, why it has to be closer than 100 feet to the highway side line. But I'd like a chance to look it over, that's all.
Right.
Move to Wilma, if I...
Yeah, right, but let me ask one, how high is the sign? 100?
It, it will be no higher than 125 feet.
And what happened if it falls on that way, towards the highway?
It, it should never fall.
We understand that.
It would be some serious illegious, but the sign, the way it's designed, it would collapse as opposed to falling onto, onto the highway.
Right.
And the reason that height is as such, because there's a berm there, it has to be sort of above the tree line, so the property drops down below the berm, so that's why they actually, so from the highway side, it won't appear to be 125 feet, because the land drops down.
Right, we're talking like, I understand the bump and whatever, and the view and the trees, but I believe there's such a bylaw in Wareham, if it falls, it must fall on your land. Such a bylaw, isn't it?
It's what?
If the, if a tower or a sign has to collapse, it has to collapse on your land.
It has to have a collapse in there, yeah.
The fall zone.
Maybe I'm wrong.
Really? The cell tower is not gonna...
Right.
Cell tower is mighty, that, that cell tower could tip over into the highway.
I guess that's why they're asking for a variance.
Yep. Close to 100 feet from the actual pavement.
All right.
I think Robert can tell you that, so, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, the, the highway property has a buffer beyond the breakdown lane, and so this sign will be within approximately 50 feet of the state property. In terms of where the sign will be located on their property and where the actual asphalt is, is substantially more than 50 feet. Don't have the exact measure.
Ah, okay.
I believe it's closer to 100, but so where, where the boundary line is, is the state property.
So it won't be falling in cars?
No.
Okay. All right, while Charlie checking it out, Wilma, what do you have?
I was just looking, he was saying about the fall. But I know there is that for a tower that it has to fall within the diameter or the height. I know for radio tower and that...
Well, I think you already explained that, right? That it won't.
Right, so if it, if it's away from the asphalt...
I just explained that it won't.
So it won't hit the asphalt, so it doesn't matter.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd just point out to you, if you just go by your own experiences driving by the highways and on Route 93 going into Boston, these signs are not...
Right, right.
100 feet or 50 feet off the highway, they're actually right along the highway.
Correct.
I know, and I always thought they were too close.
I don't think that's really the crux of the issue, plus this tower is...
Right.
Is certainly not 190 feet off.
Right.
So I, I don't think that that's...
I don't think that applies.
...a requirement of us, but we're being told the design of the, of the sign is that it would collapse.
You're right, I, I think, I think that goes for towers, because just thinking about it, like the sign for staples, if it falls over, it will be on the road too, or any signs along the highway, so that's probably applied for towers. But regardless, that's what's before us, we keep going. Jimmy?
So, one thing that I, I did kind of hear as you were speaking about increase, the sign, we, we referenced the soft-touch location, the big billboard there. My memory is that that big billboard pre-existed and it didn't change in size. It did change in height slightly, but it didn't change in size. I believe on this sign, this is an existing sign, but you're increasing the size significantly. To me, that's kind of moot, but I just wanted to make that point to the rest of the board, if it matters to anybody. I'm looking at the building inspector's comments. This sign doesn't rotate, it doesn't have any moving parts. We need a special permit, from what I can see. I guess the word flashes would mean because it can change pitches, that could be considered a flash or distracting, I kind of question whether it flashes or not. I know, I know what a flasher is. There was different kinds of flashes, I guess. Kind of, we certainly don't want you having any flashes down on the highway.
Back to the service.
But I also believe, before, when we were talking about the big billboard, we, we got into a discussion about the amount of revenue it generates to the town in the form of taxes and fees. And my recollection is, it's fairly significant. I'm sure the Robertsons are gonna enjoy a handsome lease, but that's moot too. That's capitalism, that's what good businessmen do. They make as much money off whatever they have. I admire that, I don't, I don't condemn it. And when they're gonna do something that's gonna bring revenue to the town of Wareham, and I kind of repeat my comment, significant revenue, I've heard some numbers thrown around, I think we're gonna see 10 or 20 grand a year out of this sign. To me, that's a significant income to the town of Wareham, to have a structure out on the highway inviting people to come weave their money in Wareham. So, all that said, I'll pass my comments to the rest of the board, and letting the applicant know that this member of the board is in favor of this sign.
Okay, very good, I feel the same way. Jake?
I don't have a problem with this sign at all.
Carl?
No problem with it.
It certainly makes a lot of taxes for the town, just for sitting there. Is there anyone in the audience who want to speak in favor or against? Derek, please, Town Administrator, Derek Sullivan?
No, absolutely. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much. My name is Derek Sullivan. I'm the town administrator for the town of Wareham. Inside your packets, you should have received a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen. They voted last night 5-0-0 in support of this project. If you don't have it, I can get it submitted for your records, or you can just trust me.
Hey, it's here, it is there.
We'll read it for the record.
In currency we trust, in God we question.
So it's, if you want to read them to the record later, but from my perspective from the town, yes, there will be some significant revenue to the town. However, being able to advertise town events on that highway with the amount of traffic flow, and what I'm seeing now for people coming to the town, we're almost calling them what you see, they're calling them halfbacks, where people move down to Florida, then are coming halfway back into the Carolinas. We're seeing that in Wareham and Onset area, where people are moving out to the Cape, and they're feeling a little more isolated, and now are coming back. I think this is going to be a significant economic development tool for the town, and the amount of hours we can put on there, plus the, the events and such, and the public safety aspect of the Amber Alert. and the public safety aspect of the Amber Alerts, I think these are all very highly qualified and make this a fantastic project for the town. So I'm in full support, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you, Derek. Now, to coordinate like how much the town gets, whatever minutes or hours, will they do the same thing they did with Clear Channel?
Correct.
Yeah?
I'm not saying they're gonna do the same thing, they're actually gonna do a little bit.
With the same personnel, I would say, with the town. Who do they coordinate Clear Channel with?
Coordinated through Derek's office and when somebody wants to advertise something or put an event on, or...
So I'm assuming same thing Clear Channel, not the same conditions, but they'll be coordinating with you if you wanna put something there, whatever?
Through my office, we received from Clear Channel basically a template. We will forward it to them, see if we can fit what's on there, and they'll allow that to be put up. It's been good, I'd say, I'd say actually, with having two of them, we're gonna have much more utilization. This is, uh, it's, I can see a lot more projects going on there. There's some really nice events going on that we could even do, so it's, uh... We're happy, we haven't had really any hiccups, except that sometimes you get requests that maybe really aren't a town event.
All right, good.
Is the pink path going up?
I wasn't gonna show like that, but yes, yes it will.
Charlie, did you?
Just two quick things. It would be good, and this maybe would be something if you allow a special permit or variance for this, would be to stipulate that structurally designed plans and a letter or statement from the design engineer as to how the structure would supposedly collapse and not tip over in the event of a heavy wind. To sell it, you've got something on record with the building department as to what the intention is for the safety of the public. I realize the public isn't perhaps within 100 feet of the sign, but there may be some Robinson employees that might be within the collapse range of that sign. So you might wanna be sure that there's something on record that stipulates the integrity of the design, as well as the statement that's been made, that it's intended to collapse and not tip over. That's the first thing. Second thing is, it would be a concern to me, would be whether or not the message that's on the board is a traveling message that a motorist would have to continually scan and read to get the whole message, or whether it's the kind of a message that I've seen on billboards of this type, which sort of flip over into a different picture, and you've got the whole picture at once. That's the kind of thing which is less obtrusive, it's less of an impact, and the less, in my view at least, the kind of a sign that is less distracted. But if it's the kind of a board where the letters travel across the screen and you have to really pay attention to it, that might be a safety issue.
Yeah.
All right.
I can address some of those issues, because they're the same kind of issues that were raised when we did the Clear Channel sign. The sort of the concerns that came about, none of them have proven true. The safety issues have shown that the sign that's been there has not created more accidents and more distractions. The state and federal studies that have been done actually show that the digital signs are safer than the signs that, than the stationary signs, because people can take in that digital sign in a faster span than if they're trying to read the letters on a static sign. And it's usually through a picture, and it's through colors. So, and it's not brighter, the actual lumens that are, that come from the digital signs are less than the lumens that come from the signs stationary that have the bright lights shining on them. And no, there will not be moving parts, and that's what you're really referring to.
Yeah, that's what he's really asking.
There are not moving parts. The, uh, it's just a rollover of one sign, one picture to another picture, and there's so many seconds in between, and it conforms with all the studies that have been done, and it's gotta conform to all the state guidelines. One of those state guidelines deals with what you're referring to, Charlie, is the actual construction of the sign itself and how it collapses. So the state will not approve it unless we have those things built in. And we obviously will need to go to our building inspector to have it approved at our own level, in addition to the state. So one doesn't sort of surpass the other, you need to satisfy both entities. So... I'm sure that is, that's a building inspector's domain with respect to that, and he's probably gonna want a fair amount of documentation to put in his file. But I'm just suggesting to this board that they recognize that and put it into their decision, so there's no question that it becomes a part of the special permit.
I think the building inspector, I don't think it's us. I think the building inspector should decide that. We should vote on if we're gonna do a special permit or variance and go from there.
Right, I mean, we don't wanna get into struc... We will take it into consideration.
I'm suggesting that you look at any of the structural stuff, just as a reminder that it's something documented that...
Right.
Should be at first place on the building inspector's list of things to look at.
We will enter it.
Let me ask the applicant quickly, do you guys have a problem? If we get a vote tonight, do you guys have a problem supplementing this file with that type of evidence?
I just assumed that you say that it needs to present, be presented to the building inspector when applying for the building permit, and then we can follow through the... It just doesn't seem to be the kind of thing that we should be going in front of a zoning board on and then dealing with the state's building inspector and our building inspector. It's like, it seems to me to be, you know, duplicating and triplicating.
How about we just, just a reminder for the inspector to...
I don't have any problem with it.
You know, to check, make sure the structure. I'm sure he's not gonna grant it without 50 million stamps on it, so...
I think I understand what Charlie was looking for. Charlie was just looking for something to stuff in the file to say we...
Considered.
We considered it.
Yes.
And that's all, that's all I was...
I'm fine with that.
That's a perfect...
The applicant's fine with that.
All right, uh, you wanna say anything else, Wilma?
The only thing that we were just talking about to put in the files, why can't we just say with the conditions, uh... With agreement with the building inspector of, our building inspector, that we will, you know, we go along with whatever he has to... I mean, if we take and we turn around and we ask them, I'm not saying they won't, but if we ask them that we would like, even if it's just a letter of conditions...
We will ask, but the zoning board of appeal does not have jurisdiction over building codes, and that falls into building codes, how much steel, how much concrete, that's a building code, and we don't have jurisdiction on that. But we will remind the inspector to check it, we'll put a note. But we don't have jurisdiction on that. But we will say that, how's that? That be good?
I see some chitter, chatter, I think the applicant has something to add.
Well, we, I mean, we can just sort of educate that the state will not sign off and allow this sign to go along the state highway without the town's building inspector being satisfied with the construction plans for this sign. So, you know, nobody bypasses our building inspector. And we don't have a problem with saying, if you want in the decision, that building inspector needs to, you know, approve all of the construction plans. But it goes without saying, I mean, there is something that already exists.
It absolutely doesn't, we're not here to override, or we're not here to grant over...
I would leave it for the minutes to say this, we don't, we're not gonna recommend anything for the inspectors then. We don't wanna be liable for either way. Let him do his job. By the minutes, if he gets, if he reads the minutes, he could, he knows what to do, but we're not gonna recommend him, tell him what to do, let him do his thing, so we're not liable for it. That's my opinion. So we just continue, Jimmy?
I'm ready to make a motion, if you guys are ready to vote on it.
Jake?
Yeah, we're ready.
Carl?
I'm ready.
All right, just for the records, I can't vote on this matter, Jake will vote in my place. Jake Morrison, alternate member. Any more comments?
None.
Here, none. Jimmy, wanna move to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do you have a second to close the public hearing? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yes. Okay, 4-0-0, it's closed.
I'd like to move that we grant a special permit to the applicant. And that they will conform to all local and state building codes.
Okay, if I may, so let's set us straight. If that goes, I'm gonna need you to draft a decision, please, and we'll review it and sign it if that passes. So we're gonna get a relief from Article 11, Section 1126, as well as Section 11...
25, 1125.
11, well, I'm getting to this, well, we're gonna... The building inspector's letter, so you're gonna need a relief from 1126, 1115, and 1116, Line 1B, as well as 1125. So you need those.
We need a variance from those three sections that the building inspector did and cited in his letter. And your authority is through Section 1125 to give the relief. And I think that you would be better off granting a variance, because the way our signed bylaw reads, half of it says special permit, and the other half says variance, and they intermingle both. And say by majority vote, you can grant relief, variance slash special permit, so...
So what do you want the motion to read?
I want, I would like the motion to read that you grant a variance, because that's the...
Grant a variance for the proposed application.
Don't we need a special permit as well?
A variance from sections in, cite the three sections.
Right, okay, so to grant a variance...
Sign is presented.
So you'd want the board to make a motion to grant...
Yes.
A variance. Through the variance, you need the relief on 1126, 1115...
1116.
And 1116, Line 1B.
That is correct.
Okay, not the 1125 that we discussed before. Okay.
So moved.
So the motion presented by Jim, is that a second?
Second.
Second by Carl. So remember, you need a majority vote for this, I can vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, so it's 4-0-0, it carries, thank you very much. You have a good night.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you, members of the board.
We don't have anything in here to sign.
Oh.
Is that ready?
Lenny?
She's gonna have to do it later.
You make it? How long, couple of days?
Yeah, I'll probably be able to have it tomorrow, because I have the draft from Clear Channel.
Okay.
And essentially give you the same language that Clear Channel used in their decision.
You email it to Ken, to the office, we'll run by and sign them, if you want, so...
Take it easy going home.
Ken, I don't have anything in here for us to sign or anything, so it probably just got left out.
The Ford might be back again tonight.
We'll just come by the office and sign after you guys get it in the folder.
All right. If I may, Kenny, Lenny, thank you, Derek.
Have a good night.
One second, guys. Len? So you make the draft to Kenny, so Jake, Carl, Wilma, and Jim, you guys gotta go by the town hall by... When you think you'll have it, that's how they go sign it?
She usually calls us once it's there, or emails us.
I mean, say Monday to be safe?
Oh, yeah.
Let's just, let's just put it on the recording right now, Jasmine, when you get it done, email us and call Wilma, because she doesn't do email.
You work too much, I think. You work a lot.
Still not emailing Wilma?
I don't have any yet.
So a phone call to Wilma and an email to all else.
I didn't see it, no. I'm not right now.
I do, yeah.
We're not done yet, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, oh, the motocross track, yeah.
Lenny, we gotta continue, we're not done, thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you.
All right.
Last one, any papers for the folder? Papers for the folder, thank you, sir.
Ken, petition 6-15, the road construction? Bond release, CEC solar?
No.
Oh, yeah, this is, uh...
It's not ready.
It is ready.
Charlie said no.
Charlie said yes, he wrote a letter saying yes.
He just told me no.
You wanna ask him before he leave?
He isn't ready yet to leave.
Performance bond. Okay, let me put these back in here.
Charlie, the...
The Beaver Creek.
Petition 615, the road construction for the 127R Marion Road?
Yep.
The bond release?
The road construction, in my view, is good.
Okay.
It was completed, I wrote a letter.
All right.
I did to that effect.
Yeah.
So where else we need to release that bond?
What's that?
Where else we need to release that bond, and then what was the conditions, other than the road construction?
This is the only, this is the bond for the overlay.
Oops, sorry.
It was 25,000, approximately 25,000 dollars. And the condition was that it would be approved by town engineer and municipal maintenance. Both have approved it.
So the curbs are good, the landscape is good, the hydrant is fine?
Well, the landscaping is a different issue, because the only thing that was, the security was posted for was the reconstruction of...
The road.
The pavement and the curb.
That road, which was done.
Okay, did they put loom to the curb?
They re-loomed it, the center portion got re-loomed because they had run over that. They rebuilt a portion of the sidewalk, curving is in good shape, mix was put down. So everything that was done on Beaver Path itself was done according to the requirements, including that little piece of apron that leads into the site, which is at the end of the cul-de-sac, that was done also.
They paved curb to curb?
Yes, yes, they went around the whole thing, because all it had was the binder course on it from day one.
So now it's got a finished coat on it?
That now has a finished coat.
So the neighbors must be very happy.
I think they must be.
Well, they ought to be, that was their big concern.
They're still concerned with the visibility of the, of the solar field.
Yeah.
Why, the trees, they didn't put like evergreens, didn't they put evergreens in front of it?
Wasn't there, wasn't there a...
There's a minimal buffer.
A vegetative, vegetative buffer?
Yeah.
It's in according to the plan?
I made it, I made it. Excuse me, go ahead, go ahead, Ken.
The original plan had a 25-foot buffer, and they cleared fully to the 25-foot and left a very minimal landscape buffer in between. The, this is a separate request, though, for the release of the road overlay and repair.
Okay. Whether or not, I remember there was a landscape and plant, there was supposed to plant.
Right.
Did they do that?
I don't know.
Did they do the landscaping?
They did the landscaping, and I would say, three months ago, David Pichette and I went out there, and he had some concern over some of the, some of the lowman seed that was done around the drainage areas, and we looked at it. And it didn't conform to the plan. There was some size changes for the drainage areas, but they weren't significant, so that part was okay. But there were some places that were eroded because of heavy rain and the lack of seeding. So we told the contractor that he had to fix that. Also, a couple of the berms around the backside were missing some good planting, grass and so forth. He came back in, instead of putting grass in there, he put riprap stone all over it, which was not in conformance with the plan. So I had a discussion with David, and I said, as far as I'm concerned, it's not in conformance with either the special permit or the conservation commission approval if they did something other than what was shown. So they pulled that out and hydro-seated it. Since they did that, I have not been back to look at that portion of the project. I did look at the landscaping at the same time with the same people, David was there and a representative of the contractor. There were several shrubs and a couple of trees that were dead, that needed to be replaced, and I've not had any contact with anyone with respect to re-inspecting that, so I can't... And I've not had any contact with anyone with respect to re-inspecting that, so I can't tell you. The piece that was of concern about the landscaping not being very tight was against the, there's some properties that are off of Dyna's Way, but right up against it. And that piece had, uh, a fairly good stretch of woods that were maintained. But then there was a piece in between that they did put landscaping in. But it, it turned out to be quite sparse. It wasn't as dense as everybody expected it might be when the plan was drawn. So I'd have to go back and look at that again.
So Dyna's Way complaining about the visibility or, or the Beaver Creek?
What's that?
Yeah, house between there and Dyna's Way.
Just one second.
No, I don't think so.
One second, so wait.
Dyna's Way.
So Dyna's Way complaining?
Yes.
Yeah, I remember, if you recall Charlie, we had to grant them a variance because it was narrow, that 15 feet.
That's right.
So unfortunately you can't have it as dense.
My, my sister's the neighbor to those. She lives in Dyna's Way. That whole project is, is horrible by my opinion. I think they did a horrible job over there.
They...
Talking about the, right behind the, the solar project behind Dyna's Way. All the people, all the houses that were really nice, all those woods got destroyed. There's no buffer. You just see a giant fence in the backyard. It just doesn't look good. But that doesn't have to do with what you're talking about now.
You, you don't think the, the planting will ever cover it?
It's just now people in their backyard that have these beautiful houses have a chain link fence in their backyard and it's, there's nothing. They clear cut everything. It's, it just looks horrible. I've grown, I grew up on Dyna's Way, so I know that area very well, but...
Well, I think it looks better than an apartment project.
Yeah.
Hopefully it grows the trees. Uh, so I, I would recommend that we continue this matter until Charlie goes back and look. We, I do understand the heavy rain messing up the grass, but if he put riprap where the grass supposed to be, he could hold the grass, put on a, a net with the pins?
I think that's what they did ultimately. They pulled the stone out and, uh, put new seed down. And I believe they did put the geogrid there. They might have put the jute netting down as well. But again, since they did that, I haven't seen it, so...
Okay, do you wanna call it, continue for next time or you, you comfortable saying yes?
This is the performance bond for the whole project?
No, it's not.
No, for the road?
It says for, just for the overlay and the road.
This is just for the road and when you say, we say the road, we're talking about the small cul-de-sac?
The paving, yeah.
Alright, so we still have an other bond for the landscaping?
No.
No, we don't have a performance bond.
We have a bond for dismantling the project.
Dismantling?
Yeah.
So the only stick we have to hold over this...
This bond, that asking for it?
Is this, is this existing bond?
That's right.
Even though they've done what this bond...
Asked for.
Is asking them to perform, even though they've performed that task, there may be another task that this board requested that has not been adhered to.
We don't know. He hasn't been there.
There may. I said may, I didn't say, yeah, so...
But can we hold up this?
Yeah, I think then, I think that we need to kinda...
I don't think we can hold it up. If he completed the portion he's supposed to, that covered that bond, I don't think we can hold it up.
I, I agree with you Carl. I believe that your special permit though, uh, because it was a special permit for that whole project, that you have the authority to instruct the people who've got it that they're not in compliance with the special permit if the landscaping hasn't been completed to the extent that it should have been.
Right. Is that a big deal if we continue until next time?
No.
Let's continue, let Charlie take another ride. How's that? Make everybody happy?
You'll make the owner happy, but...
But you also said here, this does not include release of, of the decommissioning bond. So I mean, that's in the solar field alone, isn't it?
That's, that's in case the...
That's the decommissioning.
That's in case they abandon that. There is a fee there that takes care, to be sure that they pull everything out.
Yeah.
And grade it properly and reseed it.
Yeah, but duh.
It has nothing to do with the requirements of the special permit to get certain things.
But they're not, they're really not complying with our permits.
We've got 25,950 of their dollars.
That's right.
And, and that's to make them pave a road.
That's right.
And they've paved the road.
Which they did, right.
Based on the construction.
So if we give them that 25,950 dollars back...
We don't have no hold.
The job that cost them 17,300. And we say, but we still want you to stick to the rules on your landscaping, which you haven't done. We have no weapon.
That's right.
Yeah.
Is that, is that correct?
The building inspector can enforce the special permit.
Okay, so he, he has fining authorities and so forth and so on? Well then, if that's the case then...
Right, but he can enforce it by going to court and spend money and take forever.
Well, maybe next time we have to...
I'm comfortable with waiting to two weeks.
Just wait, let's wait two weeks.
On the landscape.
What's two weeks?
Yeah, October 11th. So we can, I recommend a continuance. Jimmy?
So moved.
Do I have a second to continue six dash fifteen until October 11th? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. So we go next time.
That's fine.
I mean, two weeks is not gonna come.
Here it is, right here on, on Google Earth.
What's two weeks after two years?
This Dyna's Way.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's close this up and then...
Wanna, wanna close it?
Close, okay. Uh, any other correspondence, anything else?
Uh, the open space and recreation plan?
Yes.
I swear we got a barn.
You wanna make a, uh...
Alright.
Recommendation on that?
Yes, I'm gonna...
Besides...
Okay, uh...
The decommissioning.
Let's, I'll have Jimmy read this, read this.
I see, I see here, the board expresses unanimous support for the, of the 2017, 2024, 2017 through 2024, open space and recreation plan. The actions and goals of this plan shall be implemented by this body when appropriate. The preservation of tracts of open land along waterways, parks, and forests is crucial to water supply and wildlife habitat preservation as well as facilities of future and current recreation. Wareham Zoning Board is pleased to support the open space and recreation plan.
And we got another, this was the last one.
And this is the draft of that plan?
That's the draft and it's, it's pretty much the same as the previous one, the one from 2010 to 2017. Just updated it a little bit in terms of information. It's a very important document for us to be able to get state grants for open space and recreation projects. We have to have an approved document, your letter of support. It, it helps, will be attached to the, uh, the appendix. And submit it to the state.
So you guys, so what it is? Some documents allow the town to get some grants to buy recreational, open space, beachfront property. And Ken wrote this letter from our behalf. We have to vote for it.
Ken said we unanimously, unanimously approve.
Right, well, we have to vote say yes, we do.
My, my, my wife told me I like Cheerios, my mother told me I like milk, and Ken told me I unanimously approve.
Okay, so are you, you guys wanna be in favor of that letter and that draft, so Ken could proceed?
I don't have a problem being in approval of this.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain?
But it's unanimous.
It's unanimous. Alright, uh...
It's not, no longer ambiguous, it's now unanimous.
Okay, we have upcoming hearings, so, uh, I'll make him, wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I think we can do that. Uh, yes, I so moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Wilma.
Second by Wilma. All in favor to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Thanks Bob.